Okay, good afternoon. It's time to call a full board meeting to order. And just a couple of announcements before we get started. First of all, we, as a board, I think it's important that we do have interaction with the faculty and other people. We don't want to be a board that is isolated or that you feel that you can't come speak to. So, I discussed this with President Oldham, and the solution and our approach is that at the end of this board meeting, we'll have about a 30-minute reception. And basically, any guest here, or any faculty, or anybody that wants to talk to us, can do so at that time. So, that's, we specifically made that time just for that. And I ask all the board members to stick around, please. I know Perna's got a plane to catch, but we'll be here for you and look forward to any input that you may have, or comments that you may have about our operation. Secondly, I want to introduce our recognized, I don't see her now, Rachel Tuck, are you here? She is our SGA president, and thank you very much for coming. And one main point, just to have you stand up, is to point out, you're the reason why we're here. We're here for the students, we're not here for each other, we're not here for the faculty. You are the product. Dr. Oldham told me one time, "University is a strange place where the product and the customer are one and the same." And that is you. So, thank you.
Rachel Martin, now, since she got married.
Ah, Rachel Martin, he told, congratulations. Thank you. One other thing too, and Barbara mentioned this earlier, I have to say, since our first board meeting, I've been a little bit surprised and impressed about how much time and commitment this is turning out to be. But it is, it is quite impressive. And I am, I really am just moved by what the university staff has done for us. It is really quite impossible that we, as board members, could actually do all of the research and put together all the details. And I want to thank the TTU staff and Dr. Oldham for all your support, because I know there are countless hours behind the scenes in helping us get the information that we need and keeping us on track. Because it is a lot. It's like trying to get a drink from a fire hydrant, but I think we're doing okay. The other thing is that this is our first year as a board. It's quite a challenge to understand what, how broad and how deep this role is. But I think that we are doing it in an appropriate manner. In the first meeting, you know, there was a lot of housekeeping things, just to establish the board, establish policies, procedures, and we're still doing a lot of that. But I think with this meeting and continuing on, it should get easier and easier, at least I hope it does, because we can get past some of the boilerplate things and really get down to business. And so, that is our challenge and our goal moving forward. Couple other things too, as we go through this afternoon, there are a lot of motions and things that we have to do, a lot of things that were brought up from the committees. So, the basic agenda will be, we'll go through each committee, the executive committee first, then the, help me, then the audit committee, and then the academic committee. And I will ask the chair of each committee to make all of those motions that are necessary for information that's been brought up. So, and for the executive committee, Trudy, if you'll take care of that responsibility, I think that'll be the most efficient. So, and so, when you speak, don't forget to turn on your microphones and help us make sure that we do get all the seconds and all the votes and get it done efficiently. One comment, earlier today, I know Millard had some comments about procedures, and I just addressed that very briefly. If we always met with committees and in the full board, then it would probably make a lot of sense procedurally to collapse those votes, so that you don't vote in committee and then by full board again. And I fully appreciate that. Today, we did meet in committees, and now we're meeting full board, and so, it's kind of a, we have to address things twice, but hopefully, most of the discussion and debate has already happened. However, you know, going forward, when committees meet outside of the full board, which they have, and they will again, you know, you can't really capture all of that in the same day, in the same meeting. So, I don't really think that it's appropriate right now to change our procedures to where we collapse those votes right away. I would say, let's at least get through another meeting, and if we still feel like we're spending too many times double voting, then I'll get with Kay and we'll try to work out or simplify some procedures, so that on the days that we do have our meetings, maybe we can condense that procedure a little bit. But we will have to change policy to do it. So, we'll keep that in mind, and we'll look at it, and we'll see how it goes. Did I miss anything else? Are we ready? Okay, let's go ahead and start the meeting then. I first need roll call, so Kay.
Fleming.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Oakley.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Segurty.
Here.
Stites.
Here.
Ben Hoosier.
Here.
Willmore.
Roger that.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So, first on the agenda is item number two, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? That should be in your diligent book.
Move approval of the minutes, Mr. Chair.
And Perna gives a second. Any discussion or concerns about the minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes as written? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Item number three, executive committee, and the first thing we'll take up is the consent agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve all items on the executive committee consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion made in second, and I'll just say this as a general comment, all the items on the consent agenda, is there any objections or anything that needs to be pulled off? Seeing none, we will vote, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Thank you. So, the regular agenda, and again, these are all items that were previously discussed and recommended for full board approval in the executive committee. So, Trudy?
Yes, Mr.
Policy 007?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board, adopt policy 007 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's give it to Barbara. So, any questions or concerns about free speech on campus? All in favor of approving this policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have adopted policy 007. Revision of Bylaw 1.3, Trudy?
Mr. Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the revised Bylaw 1.3 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Teresa. All right. Any questions, concerns? All in favor of revision to Bylaw 1.3, oh, this is a roll call vote, sorry. So, we'll have a roll call vote, Kay.
Fleming.
Aye.
Fleming votes aye.
Geist.
Aye.
Harper.
Aye.
Oakley.
Aye.
Segurty.
Aye.
Stites.
Aye.
Ben Hoosier.
Aye.
Willmore.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Unanimous approval.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, review and affirmation of current mission statements, and if you remember from this morning, this is basically to support the, how do you say it, SACC COC? So, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board affirm the current mission statement, vision statement, and strategic plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, and just to restate, I mean, it is envisioned that when we go through the strategic process again in the next year, this will certainly be looked at and revised. It, you know, we don't have to worry about it right now, I guess, I mean, the point is. So, any other comments or concerns? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. So, that concludes the executive committee report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Teresa, we are ready for the audit and business committee report, and we will start off, I guess, is there any other, I think we've already covered the audit guidelines earlier this morning, does that need to be re-reviewed in the full board?
No, it does not.
We were all here. Okay?
If I may, the, for the record, we want, we would want to show, for the chair to show that the items were reviewed as required by statute.
They were reviewed this morning, all board members were in attendance. So, Teresa, the consent agenda for the audit committee?
Yes, upon the committee's recommendation, I move that the board approve all items on the audit and business committee's consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Perna gives a second. Thank you. Again, just because it's a consent agenda, there's quite a few items on it, I will pause for just a moment and let you, you should have it in your packet or on your script, and is there any item that anyone wishes to request be pulled off the consent agenda?
Is there, we were sending it to the consent agenda this morning, and I think we were thinking there was going to be maybe discussion, my one question is with the compensation question?
The compensation is not part of the consent agenda.
Okay, okay.
So, you can have at it then. But if, if there is an item on the consent agenda that you, that anyone wishes to pull off, as chair, I can pull it, and we'll do the consent agenda without it, and then we'll take it up individually. Otherwise, we'll move ahead. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, have no other comments on the consent agenda? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The audit consent agenda has passed. So, we are ready for tuition and mandatory fees. Teresa?
Mr. Chairman, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the recommended tuition and mandatory fees as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Perna's made a second. So, this is a roll call vote, is there any other questions, concerns, comments from the full board on this?
That may be a question. I've heard, we obviously all heard all the issues, and they did a wonderful job, effort preparing, giving us the information I think we needed. And I agree with all the reasons that we would have those increases, I see that they're probably necessary. But as I look and I think about the individual student, the average is about seven and a half percent increase, and to me, that seems a little excessive. I know we need to have increases, but this seems like a big step to me. And that's my major concern, you know, throughout, and I understand, it was, like I said, a wonderful job in preparation and giving us the information we needed to make the decision. But everybody, those students that come in, they don't have that background, they just see they've got X amount of dollars. And I think about me, in my stage in life, you know, it's four to $500 maybe, not such a big deal to me, but if it was an order magnitude higher at this point in life, that would be a big deal to me. You know, I make Navy pay for the last 30 years, so, so I think about that. And is this increase putting a burden, and I understand the different socioeconomic statuses and all, how that played into their decisions, I understand that too, but still, there's some students that are going to have to pay this X amount more, just to go to school and do the same thing last semester that they did this semester, same number of hours, and it's going to cost this much more. And that concerns me. And it makes me think, is there a reasonable percentage increase? I mean, obviously, we have to have something, I understand that. Is there something, will we cap it at a certain percent? I mean, the nursing students are up almost 11 percent, it looks like, in an increase, and that seems, that seems high to me. And help me understand better, I guess, that, that that's reasonable, and, you know, the place where we're at right now.
You know, I mean, I certainly can't speak to it the way Phil can, but my, from what I've observed, it troubles me as well, that when you look at each year, the cost of higher education goes up, you know, much greater than Consumer Price Index. And over time, it's just not sustainable. So, what do you do as a university? And I, you know, asked Dr. Oldham this several times, and I think that, you know, from what I've learned or gleaned is that, you know, I think as a university, we're doing all the right things. You're going to have to increase enrollment, you're going to have to build buildings, you're going to have to make this university more competitive and more attractive to the quality of students. And so, if you don't make that investment, then you're never going to get there. So, I, my personal opinion is, is that I support this, but you can't keep doing it year after year. I mean, at some point, we have to make a more cost-effective educational model. But, but as I understand it, I mean, this is the problem throughout all higher education, it just costs more.
So, I agree with your comments, and the reason that I'm going to support it this year, because it's our first year, we have a chance to look thoroughly all year long. This time next year, we better be seeing some cost-saving measures and some ways that we can bring back to these students some of the cost of operating this university.
I appreciate that comment. That says a lot. Thank you, Johnny.
And I just also, you know, we all agree with Barry, and it sort of hurts your heart because of that, but what I would want to see is that we have worked really hard on making, on creating new programs that are different, that you can't get anywhere else in the state, that we focus on online learning, because that is what the population that's going to populate our colleges, adult learners want, so that we are forward-thinking, this is what this administration has been pushing. As a board, we've got to push the same thing, because the solution is more students, this, well, there's, we can work on the formula, but as state funding has decreased, and this is all over the country, it's really put a squeeze on universities. But if we can get more students, and we can with that kind of thinking, then that also solves the problem. So, I guess, I'm not looking so much for cost savings, as how do you do revenue generation by being distinctive, unique, and innovative and creative, so that's just another take on it.
I mean, we, we could probably sit here and philosophize a long time, but I do think that this, you know, the university and higher education has to be run more like a business. And you have to be more creative, more innovative, and willing to work harder than your competition. And so far, that's what I see this administration doing, that's why I'm here. So, again, that's why I support it now, but I am concerned about the rising cost in the future.
Yeah, Johnny's comment about looking, you know, forward vision as we go through this process, and we see how it, what impacts are made, and how it is affected, and how, you know, perhaps as we go forward, how it will affect our decisions in the future. I guess that's the best, good way to put it. So, yeah, thank you, Johnny.
So, Bill?
Yeah, if I could just make one comment, this administration is fully committed to that, and starting with me, nobody here takes increased costs as a given, and we hold ourselves to a high standard, okay? I want to make sure that that continues. I look forward to working with the board to look for a long-term financial plan that makes sense, that holds costs in control, and I'd be delighted for us to be able to share with the board all those cost-saving measures that have already been taken in previous years to help us along that line, which there are numerous, and I think you'd be glad to know that that's always going on in the background. And so, you know, look forward to working with you on that.
But I do think, you can't just say, next year, we want to see this cut, because, you know, you've got to have a reasonable strategic plan to get there, it may not be next year. There's a lot to be done, so.
I think I said, what I meant to say if I didn't was, and next year, I expect to see the plan that gets us there, because it may take longer than a year, but our, I think Captain is right, we've got to make certain that we are doing the right things, innovative, and when I say we, it's the board, yes, but it's also the administration, the faculty, the staff, who are doing the right things to make this the institution, it turns out, those great students we talked about earlier, and do it at an effective cost rate for them. Just because the higher education around the country is going up and up and up and up, doesn't mean we have to follow suit. And because they're doing that, doesn't give us license to do the same thing. So, we can be smart about it, and I just want us to try to think outside the box as a board, and as leaders in this effort, so that everybody else in the university is doing the same thing.
Okay, is there any other comments to be made? And, you know, these comments and discussions are actually above and beyond just the mandatory fees, it also applies to the next item, the proposed budget as well. So, anyway, any other comments? With that, I'll call a question, and again, the motion was to approve the recommended tuition and mandatory fees, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Oh, sorry, it's a roll call vote. Kay, please.
Fleming. Fleming votes aye. Geist.
Aye.
Geist votes aye. Harper.
Aye.
Harper votes aye. Oakley.
Aye.
Oakley votes aye. Segurty.
Aye.
Segurty votes aye. Stites.
Aye.
Stites votes aye. Ben Hoosier.
Aye.
Ben Hoosier votes aye. Willmore.
Aye.
Votes aye. Chairman?
Aye.
Votes aye.
I attempted to vote no, just to have one on the record.
The motion's carried.
Motion carries. All right. Next, estimated proposed budget, Teresa?
So, Mr. Chairman, the committee reviewed and recommends approval of Tennessee Tech's 2016, 17 estimated, and 2017, 18 proposed budgets. So, upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the estimated and proposed budget as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Perna. Any further discussion on the budget, or have we covered it in the last discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a question, it is a roll call vote, Kay.
Fleming.
Aye.
Fleming votes aye. Geist.
Aye.
Geist votes aye. Harper.
Aye.
Harper votes aye. Oakley.
Aye.
Oakley votes aye. Segurty.
Aye.
Segurty votes aye. Stites.
Aye.
Stites votes aye. Ben Hoosier.
Aye.
Ben Hoosier votes aye. Willmore.
Aye.
Willmore votes aye. Chairman Jones.
Aye.
Votes aye. Unanimous.
Motion carries, thank you. So, we're ready for compensation plans. Teresa?
Okay. The compensation plans are intended to attract, motivate, and retain a well-qualified workforce, offer competitive compensation within relevant labor markets, recognize and reward individual initiative and achievements, and ensure compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the compensation plans as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Perna. So, we have a motion made in second on the compensation plans, and again, this is the plan that was discussed quite a bit this morning, with the 3% mandatory, right, and the 1% across the board, with the 2% is, I guess, based on different factors, to summarize. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any further discussion or comment?
I have a comment. When I saw the way this 3%, which is mandatory but not across the board, was being devised by the administration, it made me want to put this off till August, so we could have some time to discuss it, and to make sure that the alignment of compensation is consistent with our goals of what we just talked about. And the people who are being those innovators, the people who are being the ones to bring our university to the next level, are the only ones I'm interested in helping, because if they lived another year, that doesn't help us, just to live another year. So, from my perspective, I'd sure like to see us put this off. Now, I'm not going to fall on my sword for it, but I think we're, we've just got here, we want, we've got this 3% from the state that we've got to spend somehow, and these, I'd much rather spend it in bonuses and that kind of thing, and not necessarily do this cost of living increases and all that stuff that we.
So, can I, can I, can I, please?
Yeah, Teresa?
So, so, by the way, I agree that we need to, going forward, have a plan. To me, I see this as a compensation from the 3% of what's been done and the expectations that were set over the past year, because usually, you get it in arrears, right? You get rewarded or awarded based on your previous year's work. And so, I believe that we should set those expectations, starting in the next school year, and that we, if we need to alter the compensation planning for the 17, 18 year, but that we adopt this plan, this compensation plan for the year that we just completed, and the, and allocate the dollars as, as the committee recommended for, for this summer.
And Madam Chairman, the, my understanding is, is we still have the flexibility, Johnny, on the 2% for the merit-based performance compensation. So, we're still retaining that flexibility, and as we further define it in August, we'll be able to implement it better. But, but, all we're doing today is the broad guidelines.
Can I just clarify something? I think that 4.4, 4.3 is the policy on the compensation plans, and I don't think that's where we are right now. And 4.4, 4.4 is the actual percentages, and so, right now, we're just looking at the policy, we're not looking at, there's two different.
You're correct.
So, what does this one cover?
This is like the, just the policies that have been.
You're correct.
Already approved through university council and administrative council, that is just policies in terms of compensation on campus. It's not, yeah.
You're correct, yeah, so, so, just to clarify, Kay, you want to pull that?
If I could, the compensation plan is the larger document that, and I'm looking to Dr. Krikenberger, it sets pay scales and job titles, it also includes, in this case, the incentivized plan for the IQ, is that correct? So, this, this does not touch on directly, but thank you, Dr. Geist. So, I have, receiving confirmation from the audience that I, that it's an accurate description, this is not 3%.
Right.
Issue.
That's my fault.
That's the next item.
So.
Never mind.
Let's just back up and restate the motion, Teresa.
Upon the committee's, well, let me just state, the compensation plans are intended to attract, motivate, and retain well-qualified workforce, offer competitive compensation within relevant labor markets, recognize and reward individual initiative and achievements, and ensure compliance with applicable laws and regulations. And the committee's recommendation is that the board approve the compensation plan as presented.
I agree, so. And we have a second?
Second.
Any further comment on this? Do we, do we know where we are? No. Can I call a question?
I don't know where his motion is.
We'll come back to it, because that comes back up, okay? We'll come back. So, anyway, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. So, now, we're ready for 4.4, 4.4 compensation, and there are two items in it, one is the president's compensation, and the second one is the one that we thought we were talking about, this 3% with the 1%, 2% merit. So, Teresa?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take these in reverse order, if we could.
We can.
So, the committee reviewed and recommends approval of the 2017, 18 institutional compensation proposal recommendations. Upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve institutional compensation proposal as presented.
So, we have a motion, we have a second?
And that's 4.4, 4.3, correct? 4.4, 4.4, 4.3, right, we reversed them?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, is that, is that the one your comment is relevant to?
Yes, it is.
Well, I have a question, not a comment, because I agree.
We have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, we have a second. Sorry, go ahead, Barbara.
Oh, that's okay, I'm sorry. Because I agree with Johnny, but I wonder about this, for the business people, in a business, and Teresa, I'm following up on your comment, is that, in a, in a business, you'd say, well, that was last year, and we didn't, you know, we don't review it at this point, we just base compensation on last year's standards, because, I don't know. I mean, I agree with you, we need to know what, what the compensation's going to look like, but.
Barbara, we are, I think, what I was trying to say is something different. There's a 3% mandatory the state's saying, put aside for, for the employees, okay? That's, we're putting that aside.[1782.73] Okay? That's, we're putting that aside. One percent, one percentage point, we're seeing that salary increase for everyone. You've got two percentage points left. That's the meritorious allocation to those that really deserve it and who have done extremely well. That's the incentivization we're trying to do, right? And now, now, the question is, is how do we define and what, what are the gating items for our colleagues to get that incremental money? That's what we need to debate and, 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 and fine tune as we go along.
I, I agree. And, you know, to me, the reason I, I support this is, number one, it would've been just as easy for the university to come back and just do three percent across the board. We don't even have to think about it. That would've bothered me. This, I like, because it is, again, a one, one percent reasonable. And then, the two percent is more merit-based in, in judgment. I don't think as a, as a board, right now, that we have the ability to, or should, try to, you know, dictate in each college or department, you know, how to make those decisions. That, to me, falls back on the, uh, you know, the department heads, the deans, to, to actually make those allocations. But our challenge should be to direct them and demand that they do it based on some, some merit, you know, whatever that is determined to be.
And Johnny, um, I'm on the same boat as you on, on the merit-based compensation. The two percent is basically a pool. We're gonna take that two, two percent pool and then allocate it to some people that have excelled extremely well. In my, my book, if a professor is successful in getting a million-dollar grant from, from NASA or somewhere else, they should be taken care of much better. And, and that, and, and that two percent bucket that we have should give Phil the opportunity to reward that professor much better and could be much more than two percent. And that's, that's what we need to incentivize people to do. That's what, that's, that's what this whole institution's about, is elevating our profile over and over again.
But it's a black box right now, and I think that's kind of what you're saying, that we have no idea how they're doing it.
But is that our, is that our box to determine just yet? Okay, so, it's, it's, yeah, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it's complete, you know. So, the professor you described brings in a million dollars in, in research, and yes, he, he should be rewarded. Another professor, though, is not so much research, but is a fantastic instructor in teaching the students. That guy should also be rewarded if he excels. You can't compare them the same.
Absolutely.
And so, I think that we have to trust and demand that the university, uh, come up with those ways to measure and demand the best and reward the best.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to be the one making the decision.
I don't either.
I want the president to have the flexibility to do that. I think we, as a board, need to say, "These are guidelines we want you to be thinking about, and here's the kind of things that, that, that we, we would be very happy to support."
I agree. Absolutely agree.
And that's what we would do in August.
I don't disagree with that. What I'm saying is, I have seen this, uh, institutional compensation proposal. I don't agree with it. That's the parameters we're talking about, in my mind. If I'm wrong, then y'all can correct me, but I, I'm one hundred percent of letting the institution and the various department heads or deans or whoever make the decision, because we don't know the people. We don't know who deserves what. Our job is to set the boundaries so that they understand, this is what we think's important. Innovation is important. Extra effort is important. Improving oneself is important. What are these worth now? He, he can help us figure that out and who they should go to. But we should assign a value to these different... We should ask them to tell us what values should be assigned before we approve it. Because right now, we're approving a cost of living increase. Everybody's gonna get that. Well, I'd rather give the cost of living increase from somebody that hadn't worked to somebody who's done a great job. And that's just me. I'm...
So, I mean, just, just throw this out, and, and we do need to control this discussion. But so, would you say, would you propose a half percent across the board and then two and a half to fluctuate?
I feel much better about that. But that's the point. The, the guidelines should be set by the board. We're not being prescriptive about who we are giving the money to. That's somebody else's decision. But the guidelines is what is our responsibility. So, the president can't, somebody can't come back and pound him because they didn't get this or they didn't get that.
Okay.
I got a question along those lines.
How would I say, Teresa?
So, so, the thing, so where I'm struggling a little bit, right, is, is that I agree that maybe, that we need to have input into those guidelines. I see that as the twenty seventeen eighteen and setting those objectives for those employees coming up over this next year. And then, when we... Of which we did not put any additional guideline, uh, criteria on, right? Because we were not in place. And so, so, this is the way it's been done, not that everything that's been done in the past is the right way to move forward. But for this year, this is what kind of the expectations that were set. And then, when we put new expectations in for the seventeen eighteen, then we can potentially change how we distribute those funds for the end of that compensation year.
That's fine. Barry?
Yeah, my, my question is, it may have been answered earlier and I just missed it. But are we implementing these three percent funds like the state mandated us to? Did they say this is a three percent across the board? Or did they say, "Here's three percent. Use it like you want"? I don't, I don't, we may have answered that.
We're mandated for a three percent salary increment pool, okay? How, how it's distributed is not being dictated to us by the state.
At all.
No.
It has to be used for salaries.
It has to be used for salaries.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's correct. Um, and, and let me clarify one thing, and, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think, I think this, this has been our discussion all along, that, uh, the one percent floor on this would, would be only those employees that received at least a satisfactory performance evaluation would be eligible for that.
That's helpful. I don't think we said that.
So, so, I don't, I don't think that was clarified, but, but if...
Yeah. Dr. Stinson said that.
I guess we emphasized...
I'm just attending Dr. Stinson, who did a great job with that presentation.
Alright. So...
Wait, just to be, um, again, just to help the board members understand, there is a, um, a compensation committee on campus that has faculty, um, has the stakeholders that are involved. And so, that entity does exist when these, um, kind of decisions are, are made. And so, just for your information...
With respect, I'll make one final point, uh, in answer to Teresa's comments, which I, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I'm not saying you're wrong. But this is a one-time amount that we're gonna receive from the government. We have no guarantee it's gonna be tomorrow, that there's any tomorrow with it. So, if we are, if we give this and increases, then we've got to pay the, we've got to pay for the increases going forward.
But this three percent's not coming from the government. It's just a requirement that we raise the pool by that much, right?
Either way, we're gonna end up paying for it. It's not coming from them for next year and the year after that and the year after that.
Is it a next year? I thought it was just a one-year three percent.
Well, it's not going back down next year.
Oh, my. Dr. Dr. Stinson, so, can you balance out, please?
Technically, Johnny's right, that, uh, there's no guarantee of what the state will do in subsequent years. But there's every expectation that, I mean, this is built into, uh, the current level of higher education funding. So, there is an expectation of recurrence here.
Uh, this three percent is state appropriations that covers sixty percent of the cost with the expectation that we will cover the other forty percent of that cost. And that sixty percent state appropriations does have to be used for three percent. It does not, uh, specify that we have to do it in any particular way, but it, it, it does involve salary increases. Uh, one of the things that I probably didn't make very clear this morning is, um, the, uh, this particular, uh, increase is mandated by the state. However, this board does have, will have in the future, the right or, or the responsibility to approve any increases going forward. If the state mandates that we have a salary pool, then we have to use the money in that manner. But we also, from year to year, we can, uh, recommend that something else happens, something different. We, as long as it doesn't involve a state-mandated pool of money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Unless somebody stops me, I'm gonna call a question. Okay. I, I should've known.
Just an observation. I don't disagree with, uh, anything that any of you have said. But as a word of caution, uh, we don't, it occurs to me that, uh, this board cannot micromanage this university. Management's gotta run the store. And a lot of this stuff is judge-matic, who's done this job, who's done that? I don't know that we're in position to make a judgment on that. I think Clar Marie is one of the most capable people on the campus, and she can outline things and explain to me, and that's a challenge, uh, better than anybody. And, uh, I, I just want us to be careful, as a note of, a personal thing. Years ago, as a board of a bank, uh, that I was involved with, and the board director's got to say, "Well, this guy's worth this and this." And, you know, about three years of that, we had to recapitalize the bank because we were spending more. And, and, uh, it's good to talk about, "Well, yes, let's don't raise it seven percent. It's too much. That's all well and good." But who's gonna make the cut? Who, I mean, who, whose ox gets gored in the process? I just don't think we're in, in position to make those judgments.
Thank you very much.
One, one more thing. I don't think, Johnny, I don't think you were suggesting that we make individual evaluations, but that we set guidelines or help to set guidelines. So, I, I mean, I, I never heard him saying, "We're gonna decide, you know, that Dr. A gets this and Dr. B." I don't think we were. I hope you weren't. I don't think you were. So, I just wanted to get, make sure that was on the record, too.
Alright.
Tom, I'm sorry. I just have to, um, just kind of point out one, um, one other thing in the proposed salary distribution. So, um, we have, um, faculty at forty-six point five one percent, administration around eight percent. And so, if you think about administration and what that class, or what that group entails, for them, for that group, that will be about a sixteen thousand dollar increase in their salary versus a faculty salary that's two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Because if, if the, if the, Clar Marie is the, are we talking, when we say administration, you said, um, I thought you said that was the president's cabinet. Um, who, who does that include?
It includes, uh, all employees who are defined as EEOC, which includes, um, all of the president's cabinets, all the president's direct reports, and all of those persons who report to those people. So, that includes, for instance, let me just look at it from the academic standpoint, because it may be easier. So, that includes, uh, the provost and his staff. Uh, it includes all of, all of...
Why would that include his staff? Then, does his staff also include, is that clerical support as well?
And it includes the deans. All of the deans are included in that classification. It does not include clerical support.
So, we're still looking at, we're, we're still looking at a very... Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm just, I'm just looking at the difference in terms of... You know, when you look at it in percentages, it's forty-six point one percent.
And then, eight percent. But then, when you look at that in dollars amount and how that's distributed, um, then I think it's a little bit different.
Okay, okay. Okay, alright. Okay. Alright, uh, so, I've, I've had an HR help me with it just, just a little bit to make sure. We're talking, uh, there are approximately forty people who fall into that category. So, it is, uh, directors. It's not just vice presidents. It's directors. It's, uh, the deans. It is several, uh...
Directors of...
Assistant, uh, directors, those different types of individuals.
And the, the low salary on that is fifty, fifty thousand, uh, on there, so...
So, Melissa, those numbers you quoted were, it's not correct. Is that right?
Um, so, that would be, no. If, if it includes all, all of those, um, the people that she's talking about, um... Yeah, so then, we would be saying about five thousand, um, for the administration, if that's the kind of across-the-board type thing, and two thousand-ish for, um, for faculty, and then even less for our clerical support.
But it's all as a percentage salary, right? So, you're really saying that the administration makes a lot more money than the faculty, who make a lot more money than the clerical staff?
I, no, I, I think what I'm saying is that when we say eight percent of this, um, two million, um, that's, that's designated for these salary increases, eight percent divided among a smaller administrative pool means a bigger increase for that group versus...
I, I think all you're saying is if I take ten thousand dollars and I give them three percent, then that's one amount of money, right? And if I give three percent to a hundred thousand dollars, it's ten times that much, right? Because that's just the way the math works. I think you're saying that salaries are higher for administration than they are for faculty.
But, which is...
No, it's not about sal, individual salaries.
But you're going by this, uh, these percentages for, you know, forty-six percent faculty, eight percent administration, thirty percent...
Yes.
So, those percentages, do they currently reflect the, I guess, salary total dollars that are in there now? So, if they're, if they're...
That's what I'm struggling with.
If, if those percentages are close to the current salary pool now, then it's still...
My understanding was that was the current salary pool. So, I think it, I think it's really just, and, and Phil points out to me, the, the faculty's on nine months and administration's on twelve. So, that's another...
Right.
...factor as well. So, you gotta gross it up by twenty-five percent or thirty percent. So, so, the way we calculated the pools is we took the total payroll for those individuals that were eligible for the three percent raise as a percent of the hundred percent pool. And, and so, the, the faculty salaries make up forty-six point fifty-one percent of that total pool.
Right.
And, and so, that is, the, the dollars that are calculated are three percent of that total pool.
So, there's no redistribution, depending on whether our faculty...
No, there is not. No.
Okay. Alright. So...
So, can I make one final comment to be clear?
Yes.
I, I, I am not asking to be able to change these numbers in here, whether it goes to the faculty or staff or whoever. I think the president has to be, have that authority since he's managing all those people. All I'm wanting to do is give him cover and us take the, the decision-making authority to say what's important to this university. And innovation is something we've identified. And then, we, we, we wanna say, give some guidance as to how much of this money that is available for flex spending, for lack of a better word, could be assigned to innovation and how much it would be to some other part of it. And I'm okay with the president comes up with this. But I'm just asking us not to do across-the-board cost of livings or guaranteed...
We're not doing that.
Well, you're doing it at one level here.
One percent.
You're doing one percent. That's all I'm saying. So, if this body thinks we need to go one more year like this, I'm not gonna fall on my sword. But I think we're, it's going against what we've been talking about of being a world-class university with innovation, with great employees, who are compensating the ones who are contributing in meaningful ways, and we're not compensating as well those that are along for the ride.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying.
Johnny, I, I think you're, you're absolutely right. But, but I also feel that if, if Phil is saying to us, "Only those that get a satisfactory rating get that one percent", I'm okay with giving an average player one percent raise. One percent raise is not much. And, and, and so, one percent raise for an average player is fine. For, for those that are doing better than average, I wanna give them more. Because I wanna in, in, incentivize them to do more. So, I'm okay with one percent. And I don't know, once you start getting lower and lower than that, it starts becoming less relevant and, and not, not really motivational for people.
You're right.
And, and so, let's, let's, let's not micromanage there. I think, I think the, the goal for us as a team, and I, I really wanna push this aggressively going forward, I wanna incentivize our, our, our leadership to do extremely well. And, and let's think, let's think, uh, focus on how, how do we take that two percent pool and, and, and start populating it with, with the high performers.
Okay. Okay. At that point, I am calling a question. So, the motion is to, um, what is the motion? To adopt, to approve the institutional compensation proposal as it has been presented. It's been made and seconded. Uh, doesn't need a roll... I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Fleming?
No.
Fleming votes nay. Geist?
Yeah.
Geist votes nay. Harper? Harper?
Yes.
Harper votes aye. Oakley?
Yes.
Oakley votes aye. Segurty?
Aye.
Segurty votes aye. Stites?
No.
Stites votes nay. Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier votes aye. Willmore?
Aye.
Votes aye. Jones?
Aye.
Aye. You have six in favor and three nays.
Motion carries. I do want to commend the board on that debate and the boldness to stand up and vote your, your beliefs. So, Dr. Oldham wants to make a comment.
Let me make a quick follow-up. I wanted you to vote first. I, I will, I think we'll be able to have this, the results of this distribution by, in time for the August meeting, so I'd be happy to report to the board at that point in time how the funds ended up being distributed and give the board some view of, of how effective that might be at that point in time. I think that would-
That would be great.
That would be great because we can use, I think-
Thank you.
Your approach of moving forward, we can use this as a learning experience for moving forward, and I think that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, Teresa?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the committee reviewed and recommends approval of the twenty seventeen, eighteen president's salary proposal. And before I make my motion, I would like to clarify that although the title of the chart that we had shown in the previous meeting said mandatory three percent, the, the mandatory three percent pool, but the committee is recommending that the three percent increase for the president as part of our recommendation. So upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve the president's compensation proposal as presented.
Second? We have a motion made and second, and Barry?
Yeah.
Just a comment, reality is, we can change that. If you don't want to give him three percent now, you, you, you can propose something different, and whatever he doesn't get goes back in the other pool. Right?
That's correct.
But now that we've learned that, that's not a mandatory, and it is, basically like we've been discussing, it's merit-based, right? So from where I sit in my chair right here, I think he's deserving. So I would not say vote no, but I don't know that he's deserving because I don't have any tangible, you know, merit-based information to make a vote on that. And he may be worthy of a bonus, right? I mean, I, and for what, what I do know, I would say let's give him a bonus, but I don't have information, so I don't have the interaction that Chair, Mr. Chairman, that you and the Vice Chair has, so I'm going to defer my vote to y'all on this because I, I don't have enough information to make that call myself.
So which ones vote in your proxy?
You can, sir.
Okay.
Yes. You, the, 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 the point is the two of y'all have that interaction that I don't have, so I'm going to defer my vote to, to the chairman.
Miller?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, I thought the board fixed his salary. Is that not correct?
We're doing that right now.
That's right, that's what we're doing.
I mean, no, we haven't got any, I agree with him, how do we know that's good? It, I thought we were going to employ a, a professional like you told.
No, it's a fair point. We, we have not had a presidential review or evaluation. We have to do that for the end of the year. And, and the only reason this is coming up now is, is three things. One is, we're trying to clean up this, this business about the five thousand dollar, you know, expense thing and roll that into a salary. We're cleaning up the car thing, he was getting eighty-five hundred dollars a year for the car, well, he's using his own car, so we rolled that into a salary. And then, then the other one was the three percent mandatory, that's not really mandatory, and so that's it. So we're not really doing a performance-based, you know, evaluation or bonus or any, or anything. And we will do that, and that's why in the next meeting, we're going to have AGB come in and advise us on things like presidential evaluation, board evaluation, and possibly contract with the president. And so to me, at that time, we'll, we'll come up with a better plan to evaluate how we want to compensate him.
Who is AG what?
AGB.
Association of Governing Boards.
It's, it's a consulting firm that knows more than we do, so.
I hope so.
You're thinking that doesn't take much, aren't you, Miller?
So Teresa?
I have one comment. Oh, did you?
No, Barbara, you, sorry.
I, I just want to say that one of the real joys that I've experienced as being on this board is getting to work with President Oldham, and I started out neutral because I didn't have enough information to know if I was a fan or not. But I think he is a visionary who has exactly the vision that is going to keep this university in the game orbiting, if that makes it easier for you, that it's keep, going to keep this university orbiting. So I, I'm just, I, I have become, in evidence-based way, a huge fan, so I just want to say that, I, I, I just, that's that.
The next meeting, Barbara, you could go sit by if you want to.
I'm not sure she should be on the compensation committee to fix his salary.
Tom, I just, just one, one comment. I just, I'm, I'm just wondering about the, the timing because, you know, we have a three million dollar deficit that we've had to, to make up. We have nineteen people who lost their jobs. We're in a decreased enrollment situation that we're fighting back from. We just voted to increase tuition and fees, and I just, I'm just wondering about timing of a three percent raise for the president, and it's just a comment.
Barry?
That's part of why I, I'm deferring my vote. I don't have that interaction. I see a lot of different parameters, I understand what Barbara, and I don't disagree with what Barbara said either, but I don't have anything tangible necessarily. Performance evaluation, how does he work well with others? I don't, I don't see that, I don't know any of that, and I'm feeling like, like HR does.
I, I'm just, just the, the, again, those, the environment that we are currently working in on, on campus, I'm just wondering, again, about the timing of, of, of doing this.
Perhaps I can help out there. So when we realized, of course, that we had a problem with our budget as a result of some of the scholarships awarding, getting out of hand, one of the first things that we did when the state appropriations came, proposal came through, from THEC to the state, it looked pretty good, we were going to be able to manage this, and we were not going to be including any kind of salary recommendations in that budget for the very same reasons that you all are talking about. And so then this went into the, to the governor's budgeting process, and it came out in the governor's budget with reduced state appropriations for operations, and this dollars were set aside for salary increases. So Dr. Oldham and I, at that time, worked with both the governor's office and with THEC and tried to get that changed. We tried to get the flexibility not to use these dollars for salary increase. And, and we did not get that flexibility. We were told that this is the way that the governor's budget's going forward, and then that is the way it was approved by the state legislature. So we do not have a, we do not have the flexibility not to do this. So it is, the, the pool is mandatory. The pool is mandatory. So to address that concern, if we take the three percent and say we don't, we do not want to, to increase the board since we do not want to increase the president's salary by three percent because of the reasons that's been stated here, that three percent goes back into that pool and it just goes to someone else. The dollars have to go to salary.
Okay, just, okay, help. You know, just, just, I don't want to belabor this point too long, and just remind everyone that if you speak, to have your microphones on so it does get recorded. You know, I would ask, ask you this, Melissa, or anyone, you know, would you say the president has a satisfactory rating?
Yeah.
So then, so then, based on the previous vote, you'd at least give him one percent?
Well, I, I would be opposed to, I would be opposed to taking the leader of this university and giving him anything less than what we're going to give anybody else in this university.
You see, you see, this is my problem. I mean, and, and Barry, I really appreciate what, what you said, but in the last six months, probably more than a year, I'm out here a lot more than I wanted to be, but I, I, I am very pleased and impressed. Now, can I tell you that I went through a, through a valuation process and rated him on all these different, no, but I don't evaluate my employees that way either. You know, I, I, I watch the way they work and I, I try to observe their motivation, their dedication, their leadership, and I'm quite impressed, so.
And to Johnny's point, innovation?
And, and so, you know, Barry, if you still want to give me your proxy, you know, my goal was to say, yeah, I'd give him three percent because I believe in rewarding effort and success, and, and that's what I see. So, and I'm not afraid to, to do that.
I'm not either.
Just, just because, just because- You know, just because we haven't developed some formal evaluation process yet for the whole board, I know I have mine, and that's what I base it on.
That's the reason I give you my vote, is because I know you've had that interaction, I know those extra, that time that you've had, and you've seen, you've worked, you know, day in and day out directly with the president, so that's why I defer my vote to you, because I don't have that information.
So, Miller, you calling the question? Turn your mic on.
I call, excuse me, I do call the question. I will, I'm going to make one observation. I didn't know President Oldham that well, but we had a fellow, an industrial, proposed industrialist here, and a very bright guy from New York, used to own a Mohawk Darius that ran eighteen hundred milk cows a day, and we visited his plant in Auburn, Alabama. And I was taking him back to the airport, he was here in a, a big Falcon, so I assumed he was doing all right. And I, he said, I like the president, I asked, well, that's good, well, and I, I found, what do you like about him? And he said, well, he's not so professorial. So I, he sure made a good impression on that industrialist, and that's speak, that's, you know, speaks pretty well for him, I think, and I've been around him socially, I, I don't, I know what he's worth, and I don't suppose any of us really do, that's a judge, just a judgmentic decision, and-
Melissa?
Question.
Sorry, I already called on Melissa.
So first of all, I'm not, I'm not questioning your ability or, okay, I just want to take that off the table.
But we all are, that's our job.
Well, I do want to say, though, when we have been talking all, all day about metrics and faculty and how are we going to evaluate those faculty and what those metrics, what you guys have just said that we are evaluating is effort and passion, and I, I would consider that you, is that what we are going to also evaluate?
I don't think we said that. Can I add a comment?
That was what was said.
Well, maybe someone said that, but I don't think, that is in no way the only characteristics. I think you've got to have a university president with us, but that's a given, but I think there's just a, a whole range of other things. We didn't have IQ. We didn't ha, we had a research budget that was half of what it is now. I mean, all, just, you can list things after things that have happened. We've got a president who doesn't just sit in the office and hope for the best around the university, that is out there actively trying, irritating the hell out of people, take the hell out of that, but anyway, because, because change is so darn hard. But I'm telling you, I don't know if we'd have a university, except for the fact we're in the middle of an area that doesn't have another one, because I tell you, if we were twenty minutes from Austin Peay, the state would do well to just combine us. So I think we are distinguishing ourselves and creating a future for tech, and I honestly, I honestly don't think we could do it without somebody willing to stick their neck out and say, this is where we've got to go. I would vote it for a vote of, of confidence. Yes, I think we'll see it in the newspaper that this was done and it won't look good, but I tell you, sometimes you've got to have a little bit of backbone, that's it.
So, you know, I'm sorry, I want to quit talking about this, and here I'm, I'm, I'm I, I am not in general supportive of, of types of metrics where, you know, you, you do a personnel evaluation, and you have all these characteristics, you rate them, you know, one to five or whatever it is, and you come up with some score, and then based on that score, you try to, you know, put a number to that. That to me, does, that, that's a cop-out to really making a, a true evaluation of what that person contributes, because those metrics may be geared better for one person than another. You know, and, and if you just go by those metrics to judge a president or anybody else in the university, then the people that happen to fall in line with whatever metrics you contrived are going to do well and the others are not. But that doesn't necessarily evaluate, you know, how effective and how important they are to the university, just like the example we spoke about before of the professor who's a great researcher, maybe a bad teacher, or the professor that's a great teacher and a bad researcher. Both are incredibly valuable, and you have to subjectively stand in the gap and stand up and say, yeah, this person deserves it. And are you going to be wrong? Well, you know, that's a matter of public opinion, but that is our responsibility, and I don't think we can pass that responsibility by coming up with just some sort of, you know, matrix to do it. So anyway, I'm all for, as it's been said, coming up with some goals and desires and the things that we want to see, but at the end of the day, we have to evaluate, you know, how good is this leader for our university? And so far, my personal evaluation is, he's pretty darn good, and, and that's why I vote mine and Barry's, so.
Call for question. Can I call for question as the chair?
The truth is, we shouldn't even be discussing him with him present.
Yeah, with a sunshine law, we can't kick him out. So, all right.
Am I right about that?
I, I think the, I'm looking at you, I respect your being.
Let's call it, okay?
Am I wrong about that? No, you're right. But it's, it's broadcast, it's broadcast, what are you going to do, my friend?
Yeah. He's, he's going to look at YouTube later anyway. All right, sorry. Okay. All in favor of the motion supporting this, this salary increase for the president? Let's do a roll call vote on that.
And Mr. Chairman, combining, adding to that, the, the, part of the, of the motion that puts the expense and the car into this, it's all in this, so it's not just the salary increase.
No, it's not, it's, it's the three percent of five thousand eighty-five hundred, which, which he was getting anyway, it's just cleaning it up.
Right.
So, okay.
Just want to make sure.
Fleming?
Aye.
Fleming votes aye.
Turn on your mic.
Aye, aye.
No.
She can't vote twice.
Geist votes nay. Harper?
Aye.
Oakley?
Aye.
Oakley votes aye. Segurty?
Aye.
Segurty votes aye. Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Will, Willmore?
I defer.
Willmore defers. Jones? We have seven ayes in favor.
Thank you all, and, and again, that's the way we're supposed to do it. So, thank you. Ah, where are we? Are we ready for, is that, Teresa, I think you're off the hook.
That is the end of mine, thank you very much.
All right, so Barbara, are you ready? Are you going to be as efficient as Teresa was?
Doubtly not, because I'm just not, but I think, I think ours are easier.
So let's take the consent agenda. Barbara, can you give us a motion to support the consent agenda?
Okay, and this, this is both the academic program modifications and academic policies, and upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board approve all the items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee Consent Agenda, except was policy two seventeen in there.
Except policies, yeah, two seventeen, student academic misconduct that was pulled out in committee and remains out in this consent, consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Any other objections to anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda from the academic committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
So Barbara?
So formation of new academic unit, the College of Fine Arts, and I think we went over that, and I think everybody's clear on that. And so upon the committee's recommendation, I move the board establish a new academic unit called the College of Fine Arts.
We got a motion, we got second from Johnny. Any comments, discussions, concerns? All in favor of forming this new academic unit called the College of Fine Arts, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No. Wait, I want to change my vote.
What?
All opposed? You saying no?
He's just clowning around.
He's just trying to give us a heart attack.
This is where, maybe we need to get a sergeant in arms for this board.
Well, this is, this is exciting. This is really exciting.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right.
Okay, one last-
Barbara? Um, Barbara, you're up.
Okay, and this is the approval of the Student Affairs.
Is your mic on?
Oh, yeah, I just wasn't talking into it.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's the approval of the Student Affairs proposed rules and related policies, and I move to approve that the three Student Affairs policy and rules be approved as a group.
Got a motion, Johnny made a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor of to approve the three Student Affairs policies and rules, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I think we'll need to back up on that. The motion was to approve them as a group.
I'm sorry.
And then the second motion would be to approve them, and that will require a roll call vote.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna back up. Don't count that vote, the motion was to approve them as a group. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All in favor of approving this group of policies and rules, signify by saying aye? Does it roll call vote? Thank you, go ahead.
Fleming?
Aye, Johnny's gonna become your Barry.
Geist?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Oakley?
Aye.
Seguriti?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Ben Hoosier?
Aye.
Will Moore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Unanimous, sir.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, I think this is all of the actionable items unless something else comes up, and we are prepared, I think, Dr. Oldham, for your report, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna try to walk through this really pretty quickly. You've had the material in your, in your board book for a while, these slides, and so I, I'm not gonna, uh, stick on any one for very long. I, I wanted to give you a sense on where we've been as an institution, uh, our current vision going forward, and hopefully setting the stage for the next few months, working with the board and, and leaders on campus to develop the next round of strategic planning for Tennessee Tech. And so, a lot of the things that have been discussed and, and the board's beginning to struggle with a little bit, hopefully through this process will be made a little clearer as we use Huron, our external partners to help us and, and really develop a data-driven process at the next round of strategic planning. Just to remind us that this vision statement was the result of the last round of strategic planning that developed Flight Plan approximately four years ago. Uh, and it, it does have significantly aspirational goals, particularly for the university at that point in time, to be a leading technological university in the South. Uh, and it outlines some of the traditional ways, the, the areas where Tennessee Tech has excelled, particularly in this region, as sort of the springboard for that. Uh, of course, a lot has changed over the last four years that was largely unexpected. Uh, if you go on back to the early 2000s, there was a pretty significant boom in higher education, partly because of the increased number of high school graduates entering higher education at the time. Uh, but that was coupled with the housing boom and, and otherwise. Of course, that was followed by the, the Great Recession and, and, and subsequent downturn in state resources that were substantial in terms of higher education in Tennessee and across the country. And so there was, you know, there was a lot of shift in, uh, revenue streams from the state to the burden falling more on students and families. Uh, and, and it also brought around, which was actually a good thing, a healthy thing, an increased attention to higher education and the role of higher education in, in the United States, the importance of it, and the value proposition. And so, states like Tennessee, who I'm proud to say has been a leader in this regard, uh, starting in about 2010, really started to put a lot of emphasis on what the value was in higher education, uh, and, and to make sure the students' interests were being put at the top of that list. And so, a lot of student success initiatives took place. You, you saw, not just here at Tennessee Tech, but, but elsewhere throughout the state. The conversation shifted to student success as opposed to enrollment. And that's been a very healthy thing for, for all of us. Uh, and of course, then leadership in Tennessee, you know, got even bolder and went bigger and decided to provide free community college tuition in Tennessee to high school graduates, uh, and, and try to attract more adult learners back to completing a degree. Uh, and so, the external environment has changed on us a lot since the time we put together Flight Plan, and that's really the basis of this particular slide. Just to indicate that as that external environment continues to change, and the market in which we compete continues to change, we, we have to be able to adapt and, and move with that appropriately. I don't think any of the core values or any of the original, um, goals that were set forth in, in Flight Plan have dissipated at all, it's just a different environment we're working with now. Now, you know, some good things here, I mean, Tennessee Tech continues to be rated as one of the top value propositions in the state. Uh, this was a headline in Nashville Tennessean, uh, I guess a couple of months ago now. Unfortunately, the headline illustrates Vanderbilt and UT. Uh, it, what it doesn't say, until you read through the article, that Tennessee Tech was actually number two in that list, behind Vanderbilt. So, we, we consistently rate very highly in terms of return on investment for educational dollars. Uh, that's a, that's a position that we value, that's a position others covet, uh, and I think it's one that we, we can utilize as a tremendous asset as we look to where we need to go next.
Why, why don't I see that on billboards on the interstate like other schools that I see?
Uh, that's a good question, it's a question we've talked about a lot, that, you know, one question we have in terms of marketing, uh, and I have the same visceral reaction you do.
Yeah.
When I see other people's billboards, I, you know, it kind of tenses me up. You know, to what extent that actually translates into increased student enrollment or any other tangible mechanism, other than just some brand identity, I'm not sure, but.
I was just talking to some PhD, well, actually, recent graduates. I was in a field in New Mexico this past week, and three of them, and I told them that, and they said, wow, that would really make an impact on where I chose to go to school, so, anyway.
Well, and that's, that's something, it's something that we're taking a good close look at. I've asked Communication and Marketing to, to develop a marketing strategy that employs billboards as well as TV ads. And, and, and put a cost to that, and we'll do a, we'll do a cost benefit analysis.
I think between here and Nashville, I saw, I think it was three billboards per universities, and none of them were ours.
Yeah.
But I have a, a follow-up to Barry's question. Would it be possible to, to ask, I don't know if Bobby's, to ask Nick and Rachel to, to survey students? And see, we got a, a nice population of kids here who can help us figure out why, what we want, what would it, was it that drew them, and what do we want to advertise? So, I don't know if they could, if SGA could survey, I don't know. But anyway, just thought, following up on Barry's.
Yeah.
Do we think our student body here knows this?
Uh, we, we talk about it a lot, uh, you know, whether that sinks in on a, on a personal level or not, it's hard to know.
I don't know if they would know the exact numbers, but I do know, we have a lot of students who get into, um, maybe our aspirational type universities, and they choose Tech as a very wise decision because they know they're going to leave here with either zero debt or very little debt. So they had the choice to go to, um, big name schools, but they choose Tech for that reason.
No, what I, what I meant was, was just the fact that we ranked.
Yeah, I don't know if they can tell you the number, but they could tell you they chose Tech because of the value. So, so you're saying that would be a great motivation?
I think some of these points he's gonna cover in his next few slides.
Yeah. Yeah, let me, uh, here, here's one reason why we're ranked so highly. This is, uh, uh, salary potential for college graduates, uh, this is a peer set of in-state peers, but it gives you some idea, and we're, again, we're consistently at the top end of this, of this list in terms of both starting salaries and mid-career salaries for graduates. So, again, getting to the value proposition of not only how affordable it is to come to Tennessee Tech to begin with, but also what the ultimate benefit to the graduate is. Now, you know, this gets back to the, the, the timing issue of why this is a good time now to take a good look at the next round of strategic planning, because that external environment has continued to shift on it, on us. Enrollment patterns are continuing to shift because of Tennessee Promise and other competitive issues in the state. Uh, and I think, as I'll get to here in a minute, the, uh, the role that we can play and should play, I would argue, as a technological university in this 21st century becomes more important in a, in a differentiating kind of fashion. And, and so, some of the, some of the, uh, data I'll show you here in a minute, plus there was an appendix that was provided in your board book that gave you a lot more depth, and we can provide even more layers beyond that. But, but, you know, the goal here really is to, is to separate and differentiate Tennessee Tech from the pack, is to, is to get us out of that melu of, of sister institutions and separate us out in, in important ways, in definitive ways that speak to our brand value and, uh, identity and the value proposition. So if you, I think as you look at the data, uh, you'll see that we have to differentiate ourselves competitively in, in order to grow, which we've all noted is important in terms of, of financial parameters we're operating in, but also to build that brand identity and continue to provide the level of value that we anticipate, we expect from Tennessee Tech. So this, this is really a time to, to not redirect or change directions at all, but really to accelerate, I think, uh, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. We have the new board in place now that's operating very effectively. Uh, we have, uh, really what I consider to be a state mandate to, to realize that level of success for all of our stakeholders. And, uh, we're actually now in a public phase of our, of our comprehensive camp, fundraising campaign, Tennessee Tech tomorrow. Uh, I think to date, we have achieved just over $38 million toward a $60 million goal with four years left in that campaign, so we're, we're well underway and, and that's going well. So, it's, the timing is right to do a, a fresh look at Flight Plan and come up with the next round of strategic initiatives. Some background about Flight Plan, it was developed roughly during the academic year 2012, '13, uh, when I first arrived on campus. The, the focus areas were identified with a very thorough review, extensive review of a large number of faculty and staff. Uh, also looked at the landscape, the landscape of higher education at that time, uh, and used data for comparative purposes to, to see where the gaps were and where to go from there. So there, there have been representative metrics utilized to evaluate that progress, and although it's a little hard to quantitate, uh, you know, we have seen significant progress over those subsequent four years. And so, a, a lot has been accomplished in a relatively short period of time. And there's a few quick examples there of some of those highlights that have, have taken place in that time period. Uh, when you get into the data, uh, we're kind of breaking, I'm, I'm, we're trying to synthesize this in a way that, uh, you know, kind of gets it at a very high altitude for the board. Uh, there's a lot more layers and depth here and nuance than, than I can adequately explain in a short period of time. But, um, this particular slide attempts to look at, um, metrics that would be grouped into about three different areas. Quality of the educational experience, uh, the financial aspects of the institution, and, and then the size of the institution. And if, if, when you start comparing us to peer institutions, you can kind of put all those various metrics in those three buckets and get a sense of how we stack up. Uh, you can see, this is against, um, against in-state peers. We do really well in quality metrics. Uh, we outpace almost all of our sister institutions in-state in terms of quality. Uh, if you, if you go to, uh, more aspirational, uh, technologically focused institutions, which are generally in most states flagship campuses, uh, I think for the most part land-grant campuses, much more highly resourced than we are, and much larger campuses than we are. Uh, our, our gap is a little negative there at about 28%. Financially, you see bigger differences. In-state, we, financially, we're not, uh, with, in-state peers, we're, we're a little low, but, uh, in the ballpark, you know, that, that gap widens as you get to aspirational peers.
Bill, what does, what does that mean financially? Is that our?
That's typically things like, uh, the, uh, dollars, budgeted dollars per FTE student.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so it would be a, it would be a normalized number relative to the size of the institution. So, uh, you know, on, on educating, on a per-student basis, we're at a significant disadvantage financially, is what that's pointing out. And, and some of this is size-driven. Uh, but again, you get back to how can Tech close those gaps? It's through differentiation, growth. Uh, one, one thing that we probably haven't capitalized enough on is, is agility. As a, as a smaller institution currently, we should inherently be more adaptable and more agile at, uh, moving with, uh, new initiatives. Uh, we haven't played that to our advantage to date, unfortunately. So, uh, this gives you a little more, uh, nuance there. You can see in terms of, uh, student, uh, incoming student profiles, we rate really well, particularly against in-state, this is all in-state peers here. Uh, you know, we're a little low on FT enrollment relative to those in-state peers, uh, but, but, you know, comparable size. Uh, and, and of course, the, the red areas indicate where we're a little deficient. But again, even the negative gaps are, are for the most part pretty small with in-state peers. The, uh, you know, when you, when you have, in the green boxes here, you know, a six-year graduation rate that's 10% better than the average in-state peers, that's significant. That's a significant positive gap for Tennessee Tech. And so, you know, that's to our favor. But again, then in the next slide, you go to the out-of-state aspirational peers. And again, this is a very aspirational list. If you look at the bottom, you have Clemson, Georgia Tech, North Carolina State, Purdue, Texas A&amp;M, and so forth. I mean, these are, these are pretty, uh, in terms of, of public universities, these are for the most part powerhouse universities. But you, you particularly can clue in on the financial aspects here. The financial resources available, I mean, we're, uh, in terms of operating expenditures for stu, per student FTE, we're $25,000 below the average for that group of universities. Uh, that's a, that's a significant disadvantage. Uh, and, and, and I would argue that all the rest of those gaps are, are keyed off of that one. It's a resource issue, pure and simple. Uh, and you can, this just graphically kind of emphasizes some of that. And, and you'll see this pattern more or less throughout. You'll see in this particular side with ACT scores, you'll see Tennessee Tech in the middle there, above the in-state peer group, there will be two Tennessee Tech's left, uh, but below the, uh, the aspirational group to the right. And again, I think the goal here through strategic planning process would be how to, how to move us, further differentiate us from that left-hand group and get us more toward the right hand of the chart. You know, it's similar in this regard to bachelor's degrees. Of course, that's, that's really a function of the size of the institution primarily. Uh, here, we're again, six-year graduation rates, you know, we're, we're above the pack in-state, but we're below the out-of-state aspirational peer group. Uh, doctoral degrees conferred, we're, you know, we're still growing as a doctoral granting institution, and so we've got some ground to make up there, uh, and, uh, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of effort into that regard right now. Operating expenditures, the resource issue really comes out here, and you can see, even though in terms... though in terms of much of those quality indices that I've already shown you, in terms of resources available to educate students at Tech, we're down toward the bottom here. That's the tension, that's the dilemma that, as a board, you've already been debating today in terms of tuition and fees and other issues. It really comes back to that particular slide in a lot of ways. So then, you know, what's next? I would suggest, I would recommend that we spend some focused time at each board meeting for an update on progress toward the next round of strategic plan. We can do deep dives, deeper dives into specific topics that the board has a particular interest in, and we certainly need a thorough discussion about the board's role in this whole planning process, what level of involvement the board wants to have. I mean, my recommendation is the board stay at a very high altitude, but you need to be fully informed, certainly sign off on the process being followed, and subsequently have some opportunity to weigh in as the plan becomes more crystallized. And so, the timeline that's proposed here, obviously, it really started back in March of this year, but the idea is to have a, more or less a final, next round of strategic plan, ready for full board approval and moving forward toward the second quarter of the next calendar year. So April, May timeframe is what I would anticipate coming up during that, so roughly a year from now in that board meeting. So that really concludes my discussion, presentation about strategic planning, but I'd love to have any conversation or hear from you at this point. Where do you want to proceed?
I have a question about the development of the strategic plan. Who is your team? Do you have a, what's the process for that, Phil, if you can do it?
Well, the process, and let me just back up here a little bit, some of that's outlined here. Assuming that the board, and I don't think it requires a vote from the board, but assuming that we have a general consensus with the board today to move forward on this, we will be putting together a steering committee, probably about a dozen people on the campus to lead the effort. I would anticipate utilizing a lot of talent on campus to help with this process and keeping the board fully engaged and involved as we move forward, to know what's going on and what's being discussed, to make sure that we're hitting on the right points as we go. I wouldn't expect that the board would see any surprise when we get to a year from now, that everything would have, would have in some form or another been sort of vetted as we move forward.
Would you, will you use outside resources for this?
Yes, we would plan on using Huron Consulting Group, particularly on the data end of things. Huron is very effective at mining national data and also helping us synthesize internal data in a way that is most instructive for us to make good decisions about. And I've found that making it a data-driven process really helps those conversations move along in a constructive way, and it removes some of the, you know, just some of the emotional component to, you know, what, you know, one person's opinion is versus another. You know, the data really helps illuminate that in a constructive way.
Can you talk a little bit about why you chose the aspirational set you did and not an aspirational set that would be more like, you know, Rose Holman and Harvey Mudd that are undergraduate-focused, whereas the aspirational set you chose, they have a moat that's going, you know, a competitive moat around them that's going to be very hard for us to attack, whereas the other competitive set that I mentioned, it's more experiential, it's based on undergraduate education, time in the labs, and that was the reputation Tennessee Tech already had when I came, when I decided to come here. So what, how are you choosing which kind of avenue to go down to chase distinctiveness?
Well, some of it came out of that vision statement to be a leading technological university in the South, okay? So regional aspects played into that, but also public universities, you know, became very important, you know. Being a public institution, it narrows the focus some, and to have a technological focus, and that's a little tricky for Tennessee Tech, because we are a technological university, certainly in name, about 40% of our student body majors in a STEM discipline, which is probably twice the norm for a regional public university. But, you know, that would not necessarily compare favorably with a Michigan Tech who's probably 80% STEM discipline in terms of student population. And so, I mean, we actually look at all those factors, and, you know, there's no, in a lot of ways, picking out those flagship land-grant campuses in the South, even though they are, have a strong technological focus, and we're structured a lot like a land-grant campus, by the way, historically and physically, but we're not a land-grant, and so it does make it somewhat challenging to get a peer set that is most appropriate. That's why we've often utilized different sets of peers for different purposes, because, you know, the peer, the peer group, if you take it down to a disciplinary level, the peer group for engineering would be very different than the peer group for our College of Education here at Tennessee Tech. And so, I think we've got to be a little bit flexible as we go with that. And so, you know, I use these for illustrative purposes, just to kind of get a feel for where we are in the marketplace. That doesn't mean that these, that we may not use those as peers in the strategic plan whatsoever. I mean, that's yet to be determined. Does that help?
Yeah, I wasn't, you know, as concerned about necessarily like the schools we picked, but just more the strategy and the direction, because you can, you can either try to become like a big box store and compete against them in terms of scale and ability to draw in resources, or you could compete by becoming more of a boutique and like incredibly distinctive in what we have to offer. And I think that we already had more of that intrinsically in the brand than the competitive acquisition for grants and research dollars. So, I don't know.
It's a reasonable question.
Yeah. What do you think?
Could I follow up on Nick's question, because I kind of, I think it would be important to do a couple of other assessments. One is environmental. Who in this region that we serve, what's the population that we would serve, so that, you know, it's not going to be the 18-year-old high school graduate so much anymore? And so, assess our population, and what are the needs of the population that we're trying to attract? And then I'd go to something like Ford's 10 top careers and Ford's 10 worst careers, and see what is it that the future is going to demand in terms of occupations and careers, and aim a little bit, and I guess I'm arguing, don't go totally, we want to be North Carolina State, because we won't ever be. They're so far ahead of us in ways that I don't even care, and actually Jim was on the faculty there, but I can still say that. But I think, Nick, I'm kind of agreeing with you, we don't want to lose that boutique feel, so.
Yeah, but Barbara, when I had this conversation with Clary, the peer group he had in Flight Plan before was in the peer group we want. And this may be, because I don't want us to be compared with Murray State or something like that. I don't want to be compared with Appalachian State and Murray State, right? And so, whether it is the technological focus we're thinking about, or whether it's a smaller technology campus, that's fine, but I think we have to be aspirational.
I'm not saying not be aspirational. I'm saying be aspirational and be realistic, you know? Not that we can't compare ourselves up there, but we need to say, you know, the students in our area, that our new population's going to be adult learners, so how do we appeal to adult learners? And, you know, here are the programs we have, what are the careers going to be? It's like the new Vet Tech Management Program. That is a fast-growth career, and we got the components essentially, and pieces. So I'm just saying be realistic and look at demand, both in our area and in terms of careers for the future. So no, I'm, and Appalachian State's done some pretty phenomenal stuff in terms of growth, so don't write them off just because they're not high-tech. So I think we learn from everybody, so I don't know.
The other question that we should, two things. Phil, one is, I don't like that word in there in our vision statement that says the technological leader in the South. Why are we constraining ourselves to that? We can do better. We can be, at least, our vision should be something bigger, right? And two is, when we go through this process, I'd like, I'd like our discussion about two factors. One is, we always talk about incremental growth. Everything we talk here is about incremental growth. Our, the community around us, we've got this boutique mentality, and how do we improve on that? That's a very important point, because that's who we are. But I also like some discussion about saying, if we had $50 million more or something else, what would we, what would we invest in and what would make us really different? And let's at least have that, figure it out, and I want us to have that discussion to figure out, can we ever become that? And maybe we conclude, listen, we're always going to be camel and bound, that's all we are, so let's just focus on that, do that really well, but I, but maybe you had that conversation before, but I'd like to have that conversation to figure out, can we be better?
Yes.
You know, just one quick comment, that in our role as this board, I mean, it's easy for us to sit here and say, you know, we want to set the direction for where we want this university to go. But I think that really our responsibility should be to rely on our main employee and say, you tell us where we should be going and what, you know, what direction, what should those goals be? What is our peer group? What should they be? What do we want to become? And I almost look at it as more our responsibility to say, yeah, that's good, or what about this? You know, because I'm not in academia, I haven't been my whole career at all, so I truly have to rely and trust this employee.
Absolutely, and but we're giving them guidance.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing, saying, here's what I'd like to see, and if Phil's come back and says, that's just a bunch of crap, that doesn't make any sense, we've got to do something different. But I understand that, we should debate it, but we're supposed to give them guidance.
But the other point too I want to make is that, I'm so pleased and impressed, this is the second meeting, and he's here telling us, this is where I want to go.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's what we want, and that's why, you know, I almost wish this presentation had been given before our discussion on compensation, because I've seen this before.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? I mean, are you comfortable, is the board comfortable with this process moving forward?
Well, I was going to say, do you want a, I mean, I don't know if it's really a required actionable item, it's probably not, but we could, you know, say yes, we want you to go ahead and pursue this strategic plan.
That's fine, absolutely. I would welcome any feedback that the board wants to provide at this point in time. It's, I mean, this is definitely a work in progress, and, you know, I anticipate we will make that timeframe, but it's more important for us to get this thing right, so I'm not completely wedded to that timeframe.
Phil, may I make a comment? It would seem to me that this new millennial group that's coming up right now are much more entrepreneurial slanted, that's what you keep reading about them, and I guess the proof will be in the results of whether they're going to be effective or not, but assuming they are. I noticed on there we were focusing on getting more doctoral people through, they're not going to fund your university as a general rule, they're going to become professors and leaders and that kind, and they're just, entrepreneurs are going to fund the next generation of Tennessee Tech. So I wonder if we should, in our vision, make certain that we're...
Let me make one comment about that, and it's, because I've, you're right, doctoral programs, you can't look at them in the same way you would look at an undergraduate program in that regard. The real benefit to the institution is that that is the core of the innovation. That's where the real innovation comes from, and so if you're good at that, there's a lot of institutional learning that's happening.
So you're talking about innovation to the university or innovation in private sector?
Well, actually both, but I'm, right now I'm focused on the institution, and it's also reputational value to the institution. You know, what students will say, what drives them to pick a particular institution to go to college, and what actually drives them in terms of their behavior is often two different things.
Right, it is.
And for example, you know, I'll just pick Harvard. I mean, a lot of undergraduate students would covet to go to Harvard for an undergraduate degree, but it's not, you know, it's not because Harvard is well-known as an undergraduate teaching institution, it's because Harvard's well-known, period, and primarily because of their graduate and professional programs, that's why they're well-known. Now, as a technological university, it's very important for Tennessee Tech, if our eggs are in that basket, we have to have a reputational value in the technological areas that really demand a core strength at the doctoral level. And so, it's, I'm not really talking about us becoming a Research One institution, I'm talking about us being reputable in this arena, and that means we've got to have strength at that level.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, and thank you for explaining it.
But you, on that, you said that we were putting a lot of effort in that area, and just curious what that effort is.
Well, we were upgraded roughly two years ago now by the Carnegie Classification System to a doctoral university status, okay? That put us on a national ranking status, and I didn't show that, but we're actually only one of two public universities in Tennessee that are ranked nationally as a national doctoral university, us and UT Knoxville. And so, it puts us in a higher competitive bracket, but it required, for us to stay there, we're required to produce a minimum number of PhD graduates annually, and so our efforts so far have really been focused on making sure that we stay above that minimum level of PhD graduates. The state has come through in this particular budget cycle with a half million dollars of new recurring dollars for that Carnegie reclassification, and we are, in fact, we just met earlier this week to finalize plans of how to invest that half a million dollars into those existing PhD programs strategically to make sure that we meet that PhD production requirement. And as time goes on, we'll look at, see how we can add additional PhD programs to make sure. Right now, we have three PhD programs, and so a three-cylinder engine is not particularly stable.
Yeah, that was one of my follow-on questions, how many we had? I thought it was, you know, five or so, but it just takes three.
Yeah, we have three.
And are we looking to increase that?
Yes, we are looking to increase that. Of course, that's a longer-term investment, and the payback is a little longer term. So right now, we're looking at investing these dollars in areas where we'd get a quicker return on that, to build up the existing programs, but the next round, we'll be looking at how to increase the number of PhD programs to make that more stable and give us more depth.
So which three programs do we have, though?
We have a PhD in Engineering, which is...
All branches.
All branches of Engineering, and we have a PhD in the College of Education and Exceptional Learning, and then we have, the smallest of the PhD programs is an interdisciplinary program in Environmental Science, and that's one that we hope to be able to build up and get a little bit larger, but, yeah.
Phil, I have an input for you on your new strategic plan as we move forward. I'd really love to see focus that I haven't seen before on career services and recruiting, and with that, whether we like it or not, recruiters aren't going to come here if we don't have an increased minority presence. And so, I think we need to, and I say like that or not in the sense that we'd like to believe, we just want good students, whatever they look like, and I always agree with that. But I think that we need to increase our minority presence for a number of reasons, and then in our recruitment, I think should be a real focus, and perhaps even we should get some of the people who do recruit...
And perhaps even we should get some of the people who do recruit with us now involved in our strategic plan.
Oh, no question.
Some way, I don't know how you do that.
No, no question. And to your point about career services, that's, that's an area that's already popped up. And, and it makes perfect sense when you think about it. I mean, our, our niche currently, our advantage is, is that we do have a har, a high ROI on investment here in the state. And that's because our students graduate and get placed effectively and make good salaries. We have not leveraged that completely. And, and so putting more emphasis on career services and, and really taking that to the next level and being able to market that to next generation of students to say, look, you know, we, we provide more than an education, we provide an opportunity for life here, and we've got the data to prove it is a...
Because in some ways, while we say the students are our product, and they are, the jobs they get are part of that product.
Absolutely, and, and serving those potential employers. And, and to the point about entrepreneurship, and I think everybody's right here as well. You know, this generation of students is a lot more interested in starting their own businesses and establishing their, their own career on their terms. And so, you know, whether they're working for somebody else and being entrepreneurial within a corporate environment or whether they're, you know, taking an idea and creating their own business. I mean, that's, I think that's where our ultimate niche is going to be found.
Okay, anything else? We are still ready for, we've got item agenda number seven. Dr. Garashi? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. As Dr. Garashi's coming, I would like to take an opportunity to, to publicly thank Provost Garashi for his service as provost over the last four years. He's been a valuable colleague and friend and appreciate all that he's done. And, and the board knows that Dr. Garashi's announced he's stepping down as provost effective the end of this month and, and going back to the Department of Chemical Engineering, which is his discipline. But I just wanted to say thank you to him and give the board an opportunity to, to thank him as well.
Thank you, President Oldham, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I really appreciate that comment. We have wonderful faculty, excellent, excellent staff and wonderful students on this campus. Credit for any accomplishments over the past four years should go to them. I just feel I was very privileged and had the honor to serve as the Chief Academic Officer of the institution. Thank you for that recognition. Mr. Chairman, this last item is an informational item that might be helpful to the members of the board. First, I will attempt to give some general background information about the accreditation process. Then I will update, update you specifically about T T U's present position. Accreditation is a form of endorsement to let our students know that we offer a valid education that is officially recognized by the U.S. Department of Education. In the United States, gaining accreditation is a voluntary, non-governmental process. Institutions request to be evaluated and/or have their individual programs evaluated by an independent accrediting agency. As such, the U.S. Department of Education does not accredit institutions. However, it does determine which accrediting agencies receive recognition by DOE. DOE-recognized accrediting agencies can have a regional or national scope. Some individual programs are accredited by national accrediting agencies such as A B E T for Engineering. The regional agencies accredit degree-granting institutions within six geographic regions of the United States. Very quickly, those are Middle States Commission, New England Association, Higher Learning Commission, which was previously North Central Association, Northwest Accreditation Commission, Southern Association of Colleges and Schools and Western Associations of Schools and Colleges. Tennessee Tech is accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. The acronym is S A C C O C. Other states within this region are Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, and Virginia. For those institutions of higher education, of course, that award associate, bachelor, master's, or doctoral degrees. S A C C O C's Board of Trustees is the representative body of the College Delegate Assembly and is charged with carrying out the accreditation process. The mission of S A C C O C is to assure the educational quality and improve the effectiveness of its member institutions. To gain or maintain accreditation with S A C C O C, an institution must comply with the standards and policies and procedures of the commission. S A C C O C applies the requirements of its principles to all applicants and member institutions, regardless of the type of institution, public, private, for-profit, private, non-for-profit. And they have these principles of accreditation in form of a book. This is just a summary booklet of what it involves. So this was a general, very brief overview of the accreditation process. Now, more specifically in regard to Tennessee Tech. We were first accredited in nineteen thirty-nine and most recently reaffirmed of the accreditation in two thousand sixteen. Many thanks to many of our colleagues, some here, many are out there, our students and staff. We received actually a flawless outcome with no recommendations. The S A C C O C defines substantive change as a significant modification or expansion in the nature and scope of an accredited institution. According to S A C C O C policy, change of governance, which we are now working with, as in the case of Focus Act, is a substantive change which requires prior notification and prior approval by S A C C O C as well as an onsite visit by a substantive change committee. In your materials diligent tab seven point three, you have a chart showing the timeline of the correspondence and activities that have taken place and will take place related to governance change. Tennessee Tech's onsite visit with the S A C C O C substantive change committee is scheduled for September twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth of two thousand seventeen. The committee will conduct interviews with T T U trustees, administrators, faculty, staff, and students to examine whether the institution continues to be in compliance with the principles of accreditation. Those pertinent principles, particularly for the board, are in your materials diligent tab seven point two. In preparation for the visit, Tennessee Tech will submit a comprehensive report to S A C C O C in early August of two thousand seventeen documenting compliance with those specific principles. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garashi. And again, thank you so much for your service to this university.
It has been a pleasure, sir, thank you.
So we are up to item number eight, other business. And I would like to go back and pick up one thing. I'm just thinking about it. You're planning for a strategic plan. I would like you, I mean, I think we should have you go forward with it with the full support of the board. So I would entertain a motion just from anyone on the board that we, we support your direction in, in a strategic plan and just leave it in that, that general format, but to be started next year. Is that appropriate?
So moved?
Seconded.
We have a motion by Perna. Johnny made a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May you oppose? Thank you very much. One, one other question too. You, you talked about the Huron Group supporting the strategic plan. Have also discussed with A G B doing the presidential evaluation, board evaluation, our potential contractual review or, or if we're going to do a contract. I'm asking your opinion, are they similar consulting services? Should we use the same group?
I don't know that I can, I don't know that I can answer that, Shandy.
Very different organizations. And I think at, at a high level, the delineation is outlined very appropriately.
Thank you very much, that's perfect. Okay, item number nine, announcement of regular meeting dates. They are all ready printed in your information. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
I have one question.
Barbara?
Is the, does the, is the whole board, and I hope the answer is no, going to be involved in the interview process in September or...
The S A C C O C?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I would, I would not anticipate the whole board necessarily needing to be involved, but there, there would, S A C C O C site committee will, will need access to a requisite number of board members, so. And, and that doesn't necessarily mean they have to be here in person. Some of them here in person. If, if some of that needed to be by telephone or otherwise, I'm sure that could be worked out too.
Okay, I think we are just about adjourned. I want to remind all the board members and all of our guests here that we will be here for at least another half hour in a reception. And if you have any questions or want to speak to any board members, please take that opportunity. Thank you all. I think it was a very effective meeting. I hope you're pleased. And thank you all for the discussion and contributions. We are adjourned.
Thank you.